You can start when you'd like to.
Wonderful, Jay. Thank you so much as always for your help. Good evening. This is Chairman Wells of the Woodland Planning Commission, and I'd like to call to order our meeting for this evening of May 20th, 2021. I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting, and it should be reflected in the minutes, that this Planning Commission meeting of May 20th, 2021, will be conducted pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order in 2920. The meeting will be held via teleconference, and Planning Commission members will participate via teleconference. The locations at the commissioners are located are listed on the agenda and are not available to the public. The public is encouraged to listen to the Planning Commission meeting live on Woodland TV, it's Channel 20, and also by going to the City of Woodland website at wwwcityofwoodland.org/meetings. If you wish to make a comment during general public comment or on a specific agenda item, there are three ways to do that. First, members of the public are invited to leave a voicemail message at 530-661-5900. Again, 530-661-5900. All voicemail messages received by 6:30 today will be played during a Planning Commission meeting as part of the record at the appropriate time. Again, 530-661-5900. Second, any member of the public watching the livestream who wishes to make a comment on an item that is being heard may submit an email to the following email address prior to public comment on that item. That email address is planningcommissionmeetings, and again, planningcommissionmeetings, no space, and plural, at cityofwoodland.org. If you email, please include the agenda item on the subject line. Third, you may participate via Zoom. You will find a link to the Zoom webinar meeting in the Planning Commission agenda that is posted online. Click on the link to join the webinar. The webinar ID is listed on the webpage as well. The webinar ID is 921-7009-5836. Or you may access Zoom via phone by dialing 669-900-6833, and then putting in the webinar ID, which once again is 921-7009-5836. Please note, all comments are limited to no more than three minutes. This includes voicemail messages and email comments subject to be read into the record. The email shall be read for no more than three minutes, and this means that if we have a longer message, we may not be able to read the full email within that three-minute timeframe. Or if you submitted both a voice message and an email, we will only take one. Okay, at this time, we would like to have Cindy take our roll call. Cindy, would you do so, please? And for behalf of every, every member of the Planning Commission, please respond with your name and verbally because the record needs to include the actual.
Great. Commissioner Harris?
Here.
Commissioner Holt?
Commissioner Holt is here.
Commissioner Hurst?
Hurst is here.
Commissioner Liz Araga?
Marco Araga is here.
Commissioner Lopez?
Fred Lopez is present.
And Chairperson Wells?
Chairperson Wells is in attendance.
Great. We have six members present. We have a quorum.
Wonderful. Cindy, thank you. Okay, now I would like to request each member of the commission to respond to these questions, and we'll just go down the list. So the question is, Commissioner, can you hear me well? And so I'll go down the list, and so that question to Commissioner Harris. Steve?
I can hear you well.
Thank you. Commissioner Holt?
Yes, sir. I can hear you fine.
Thanks, Chris. Commissioner Hurst?
I can hear you.
Thank you, Valerie. Vice Chair Liz Araga?
Hi, Chair Liz Araga. Can hear you good.
Thanks, Marco. And Commissioner Lopez?
I can hear you.
Thank you, Fred. Does each member of the commission have a copy of the agenda for the meeting? And again, the agenda is on the screen when they come back to that. Please respond individually as well. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes, sir, I do.
Commissioner Hurst? Valerie? Okay, we'll go to Vice Chair Liz Araga.
Okay, Vice Chair Liz Araga can hear you. I'm here.
Okay, no, no, the question is, do you have a copy of the agenda, or can you see one for the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and for Commissioner Lopez?
The agenda that I see before me on the monitor is what I have.
Perfect. And again, I'll come back to Commissioner Hurst. Valerie?
Can you hear me now?
There we go. Yes.
Yes, I do. Yes.
Okay, thank you. And for Cindy, Commission Secretary, have you posted the agenda at a location reasonably accessible to the public?
Yes, I have.
Okay, Cindy, thank you. The record should reflect that six commission members are present for this teleconference, and have indicated that they are able to hear the proceedings. At this time, I'm requesting that additional city officials that are on the webinar identify themselves.
Cindy Norris, Principal Planner, present.
Okay.
Lynn Johnson, Senior Analyst, CDD, present.
Thank you, Lynn. And also, at this time, I'd just like to do a shout out to Jay and the rest of our team on the IT side that make all of this work and makes it look seamless and professional. So thank you so much for the work that you guys do. Okay, now, as we go through the agenda, which, give me just a second here because I printed that up, but... Pardon me for that. Thank you. So at this time, we would like to make sure that each time we identify somebody that we speak clearly, we identify yourself each time. Let the individual who's speaking speak, and please do not interrupt. I would also like to ask, to the greatest extent possible, that everybody mute their phones or other devices while actively speaking so that we don't get unnecessary background noise. And I'd like to advise all commission members and the commission secretary that any votes taken during this teleconference portion of this meeting must be taken by roll call and done so verbally. Okay, at this time, Steve, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I surely can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, thank you. Okay, at this time, Cindy, do we have any update statements from staff or communications from the public?
She stepped away for a moment, Kirby.
Okay, okay, well, let's give her a second for that.
Today, we have nobody from the public currently connected, and we have zero emails and zero voicemails.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Because I'm muting my phone here, and make sure I follow everybody else, the directions I ask everybody else to do. Okay, so while Cindy's, before she returns, let me go through and just ask if any of the commission members have any comments or anything that they need to bring up. Once again, when we're done with the webinar itself, before we close out tonight, I'll come back around for any comments for commissioners or additional information. But I'll run down just quickly, Steve, any additional, any, any information, anything you need to provide to the commission?
Not at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Holt?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Commissioner Hurst?
No.
Thank you, Valerie. Vice Chair Liz Araga?
No comment.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez?
No comments.
Okay, no comments on myself as well. Cindy, are we back yet?
She just sent me a message. She's having some technical trouble.
Okay. Okay, so, so we've got on that item, we've got long-range calendars. We'll, we'll come back to that in a bit. And so let's now look to... The, what did I do with that? Okay. Okay, why don't we jump in? And Lynn, why don't you, we're gonna have a, we don't have any public hearing today, but Lynn, why don't you go ahead and open our discussion into our capital improvement program?
Certainly. I'm not able to share the attachments that were sent to you earlier. If Cindy gets back on, she'll put them up. Otherwise, you were each sent them, I believe, in your packets earlier. I'm not going to go through all of them. I will tell you that, introduce myself first, and thank you for having me, Chairman Wells and planning commissioners. I come before you again every year, typically this time of year, and I bring to you the fiscal year 2022 Capital Improvement Program. And my purpose in bringing this to you is a legal requirement to find the projects that are in our capital improvement program in conformity with the city's general plan. And as the planning commissioners, this is your role to determine that. So in the attachments that you are provided, you have a list of all of the capital improvement projects, many of which you've seen before because they are multi-year projects. And then you also have an attachment that shows you the connection between each of the projects and the goal in the general plan that it ties back to, kind of what brings it all back together. There we go. So in the general plan analysis, some of these are policies, some of these are goals, and so we've connected each of the projects to that. I'm not going to walk you through each and every one of them because many of these projects have been long-term projects, and you've seen them before. So what I'm going to do is, is highlight about, oh, half a dozen, couple more projects that I think might be of interest to you all, and then open it up for questions either related to the projects or related to the conformity findings. So I'm going to start with the parks category. So if you want to skip down a page, whoever's got controls right now, thank you. So I'm going to highlight item 11, which is the 2022 Spring Lake Parks Project. I know parks are always of high priority in our community. This particular project will build out the last six acres of the Spring Lake Park. It will also include a greenbelt and a path from the former central area to the future pet overcrossing. So this is the rest of the build-out of the two-acre park that was previously built. The item just below that, item 12, is the Community Rain Garden Demonstration Project. And we just opened bids for this project last week. It will go before City Council the beginning of June for a ward of contract. This is kind of an interesting and new project for us. This will build a rain demonstration garden at Crawford Park. So we have a $49,000 grant for this, and then we'll be using sustainability funding for the match, the remaining amount that will be required to build the project. So that's kind of a new and fun and different project that is in alignment with our sustainability group and will be great for the community to have. I'm going to move on to sewer. So if you want to page down for me, I'm Cindy. Keep going, please. So within wastewater, I would say the highlighted project of interest there, since wastewater is not one of our areas of high interest typically, although we all need it, we know, we have our East Gibson Trunk Sewer Project. This will repair a 3,200 linear foot section of sewer line that runs on East Gibson, typically past the mall, heading east from there through the 113 area, the interchange there. There'll be two large manholes that will also be affected by that project. Moving on down to transportation, if you could page down for me. And maybe one more. I may have missed, I'm going to highlight, some of them are not new to you, thank you, Cindy. Some of them are not new to you, but I'm going to highlight the transportation programs that we see moving forward this year. We are right in the middle of bid opening this week and next week of six transportation projects, all of which we're taking hopefully for construction this summer. So I'm going to start with the East Main Street project. That's been on the books for quite some time. This project will build some bike lanes, curb gutter, landscape between East Street and Pioneer. It's a grant that's been on our books for quite some time, and we are now finally able to cobble together the remaining funding to build this project. We expect it to start construction hopefully in late June and finish up this fall. So that's a good one, and it does create some additional connectivity in our bike system. So that's exciting. We have our Gibson project. There's actually two projects. The public will see it as one project. There's two grants. One of them is from County Road 98 to West Street. The other grant is from West Street to East Street. The project will be bid as two separate projects. It may or may not go to the same vendor. So what we will see this summer there is some additional utility work. So our utility crews have been in there this past year doing some major utility repairs. Now we'll go in and raise and lower some lines, and then in next summer, early next spring, summer, we'll actually do the pavement work. So we will see some impact through the Gibson area for our transit system temporarily, not transit, but transportation system in the interim, but in the long run, we're going to fix a section of road that's in high need. We're going to put some of it on what's called a road diet. So you'll see some of the four lanes go to two lanes, and you'll see some protected bike lanes involved in all of that. So that's another good project. We will begin some of the dirt work for the sports park pedestrian overcrossing project. That will be a multi-year project, but we're going to kick it off with some dirt moving. That's an exciting one that's going to create some connectivity out in the Spring Lake area. And then we will have our annual road maintenance project. This year is going to be in the areas of West Lincoln, West Cross, and part of Cottonwood. And then finally, we will be bidding our traffic calming project. I believe it's Tuesday is the bid opening, and that's in the Pendigas Bartlett area. So that's kind of the overarching look at our summer transportation projects. None of those are brand-new. Some of them are just being added, but some of you've seen before because they've been in design. We'll also have an annual ADA project. I don't know the exact corner locations for that ADA project this year. So moving on to water, the main water project this year, other than our annual water sewer repair project, that project will be in the areas of Marshall Avenue between College and Fourth and Gum Avenue between Thomas and Fourth. We're also going to be commencing a multi-year water meter replacement. So some of you that have been around for a long time know that the city went to water meters a number of years ago. Those meters were installed with a large grant, part grant, part loan from the state. I'm not going to tell you their exact age right now. I believe it was around 2,000 that we started putting those in, but some of those are getting of age that they need to be replaced. So we're going to be commencing a annual kind of phased-in approach to replacement. So those that were installed earliest in that project will be replaced earliest and so forth. And that's just part of general maintenance, and it's important that those meters stay current and stay accurate, both for the city and for the consumers that are buying our water. So those are kind of the high-level projects that I thought might be of interest to you. And with that, I will open it up to any questions, and if I can't answer it, I'll get back to you with answers.
Ms. Johnson, thank you so much. As always, great presentation. We appreciate you coming in every year and kind of giving us the, the highlight on, on, on these items. And so what we'll do is we'll go through, since we're on a virtual process, I'm going to go through and ask the commissioners alphabetically if they have any specific questions for you. At this time, Commissioner Harris, any questions?
You're on mute, sir.
Nice to see you, Lynn. Thank you, and I have no questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Holt?
I do have one question. Thank you, Lynn, for the presentation as usual. I, I do note, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, is this a little bit of a slimmer CIP this year? Or is it, is it roughly about the same as it has been?
I would say it's about the same as it has been. I tried to give you kind of a highlight version. There are other certainly studies and design work and so forth going forward. They're just not as visible right now in the community, and they're multi-year. And so I was trying to give you the kind of the overarching version.
Item number nine, which is the Southeast Area Pool Project. I know that's been going with us for quite a while. It's kind of the replacement to Hiddleston, if, if, if you wanted to link those two. Can you give us just a little update? I noticed there isn't a lot of money. It looks like probably design fees or maybe some study fees. One, how long do we anticipate studying this? And then also, is there an exact site that's been chosen yet, or is that still up in the air?
So there has been a site, and I'm not going to be able to give you the exact directional location, but it's by Pioneer High School. So it's, it's over somewhere between the junior, it's not junior college. What do we call that? Community college, thank you. Tell how old I am. The community college and the high school. And I want to say that we have rights to a two-acre, maybe three-acre, something like that, that we entered into agreement with several years ago. With that, we have been trying to obviously look at our budget. As we have been going through the pandemic, there have been a lot of ups and downs in what we expect in our general fund revenues, and that impacts our special sales tax revenue, primarily Measure J, which is the core cent sales tax. That said, there was some interest by one of the council members Tuesday night. They received the preliminary fiscal year 2022 budget, and there was some interest by one of the council members to try to cobble together a little set-aside money to make that project maybe a slightly higher priority. So that has not been approved yet. So I can't really tell you more than that. I know there's an interest in the community. I know we have the site determined. I know we have preliminary design, not full design, but preliminary design, and we're just trying to figure out a funding plan to make that happen.
Understood.
The pandemic kind of really put a slowdown there.
Yeah, I figured that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Chris, as always, good questions. Thank you. Commissioner Hurst?
Can you hear me? I'm hoping my mic is good. Okay, great. For the Community Rain Garden Development Project, was that designed with input from community members in the Sustainability Group? Or how was that? Is that going to be through the bid process? Or I wasn't actually able to see the design component of it?
And honestly, I have not seen the design component either. I know that there was a grant obtained. This is a project that has, has been tried to be designed and so forth with minimal dollars with this grant. And I'm, I believe it's gone to the Sustainability Committee, but honestly, I don't know. I can't look at the path that it's gone. It was put out to bid, I believe. It opened week before last. Bids came in higher than expected, which is typical. We had two bids. We had some ad alternates, and so the plan is to go to the City Council, the first meeting in June, to ask for additional funding to match the grant to go with this project. As far as the path on the design, I'd have to look into that a little bit further with our Environmental Services Manager to determine what input was, was provided for that design, and I can get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Valerie. Thank you, thank you, Lynn, for that. Vice Chair Liz Araga?
No questions.
No questions? Okay. Commissioner Lopez?
No questions.
Thanks, Fred. And I have no questions. So at this time, I'd like to ask if one of the members of the commission would entertain a moment, a, a motion to approve the capital improvement project presented by Ms. Johnson?
This is Liz Araga, and I will so move.
Okay, so we have a motion by...
I'll second that.
Okay, and we have, so we have the motion by Vice Chair Liz Araga. We have a second by Commissioner Lopez. So now we will, let me ask first, does anybody have any comments or additional questions? I'll go down quickly. Harris? You're, I think you're muted, Steve. You're still muted. There you go.
I'm not muted. Yeah, okay, I'm not muted. I have no questions.
Good. That, that was not very quick, but, but we'll deal with you. Commissioner Holt?
No, sir, no additional questions.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Commissioner Hurst, Valerie?
Here we go. Is that it? There we go. No additional questions.
Okay, thank you, Valerie. Vice Chair Liz Araga, any additional questions?
Absolutely not.
Perfect. Commissioner Lopez?
No questions.
Okay, so now I'll call for the vote. Again, we'll go down alphabetically. So Steve, we'll start with you. Aye? Okay. Commissioner Holt?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Commissioner Hurst?
Aye.
Thank you, Valerie. Vice Chair Liz Araga?
Ayes.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Okay, and I vote aye. So the motion is unanimous. As always, Lynn, thank you very much, and I'd appreciate if you do get back to Valerie on that rain sustainability so that she can see what kind of the path on that, that planning is. Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Lynn. So at this point, we're now going to go to any questions or comments for the Planning Commission. So I'll go down, and we'll start with Commissioner Harris as kind of our wrap-up comment. Steve, do you have any comments or questions for staff?
No, everything was presented well and very plain, so I have a good concept of what's going on. I have no questions.
Okay. Commissioner Holt? Chris?
Sir, I think Cindy may be able to cover the long-term, the long...
So let's go, and we'll go ahead and finish the comments, and then we'll, we'll run through that.
No worries. No questions.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Valerie?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Liz Araga?
Yes, I have a couple of things. One thing is, you know, we have not had, I'm glad to see you back, Cindy. We have not had a, a commission and city council joint meeting for quite a while. And I think we should ask staff to, to, to go ahead and see if one can be set up. It was a two-two meeting that we've always had a long time, you know, that we served. We haven't had one. Anyway, that's one thing. The other thing is, I think, you know, there's some issues that we need to review and revise and go back to in terms of the cannabis committee. I think we need to have some thorough discussions on the commercial outlets possibilities. I'm concerned about revenue losses, potential revenue losses that we're not getting. And I think we need to go back to that. We need to go back to the table and get that going. Those are the two things that I wanted to mention.
Okay, so with that, I will task, because our two members on the cannabis committee is Commissioner Harris and Commissioner Liz Araga. So if the two of you guys can get together and then communicate with Cindy or Ken, whatever that process is. But yeah, let's, let's get back on that, on that horse and get those items resolved.
Kirby, I just have a, a point to make. It's actually Steve and I, Commissioner Harris and I, that are on the cannabis committee.
Okay, I don't know that that, because originally it was, originally it was Commissioner, I know Marco was on there originally. I'm not sure. Cindy, could we, could we go back? We can do that after the meeting. So could you double-check? But yeah, so Valerie, if you're currently serving on that commission, then yeah, if you and Steve could get back together, swing back around and talk to Marco about his relative issues so that we can kind of get that addressed and, and moving forward.
Yeah, if I was kicked out, I'd like to know.
Okay, yeah, and Valerie, thanks for the clarification. I appreciate it. Okay, Commissioner Lopez, any, any comments or observations before we...
No, no, no comments, but yeah, it's nice to know if you've been removed off of the mission.
Yeah, great, I agree. So I'm not sure where that, specifically where that happened, but...
Didn't you get the memo, Marcos?
I know, I didn't get a memo, so, you know. Let me know the COVID, okay?
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll, we'll check that out. So the, and then for myself, I have two items that I would like to bring up that are, have been long-going. So Cindy, is it possible, can you give us any update on our two longstanding properties? One is the, the, the overgrown home that's been chain-linked fenced, and, and we have six-foot weeds there at Lincoln in Cleveland. And then also, if there's any update on the long... And and also if there's any update on the long empty Long John Silver's building?
Yes, I'll tell you what I know. Just having kind of heard a conversation in the office. I believe that the Cleveland and Lincoln side, I know that the building official has been working with that property owner. They have been processing plans with that owner. And so it is it is a work in progress. It there's, what happens is they have timeframes that that the owner has to comply within that certain timeframe. And it's my understanding that they have met those timeframes. So I can find out more information, more specifics and report back in our next meeting. With regard to Long John Silver, good news. It's my understanding that the property has been purchased by another property owner. I, to my knowledge, we do not know who it is who purchased the property and we have not heard from the owner as to what their thoughts are with regard to the property. But so that's great news that that at least something's moving forward.
That's excellent news. Thank you, Cindy. Yeah, so if you if you could report back to us, because I mean, that 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 home on Cleveland and Lincoln, I mean, we've been bringing that for over over five years. And I would think that whatever the the planning process or, you know, the the issue, the permit issues or non viability issues over five years, you think that that could get accomplished. So yeah, if you could bring that back to us, we would, great. But yeah, Long John Silver's, woo-hoo. That's that's great news. Okay, Cindy, do you have any other comments? We have a long-term calendar. Let's take a look at that.
Hey, Kirby?
Yeah.
If I if I may, I I realize they did have something to comment on.
Okay, go ahead. Now?
I really, yeah.
You're, we're having some kind of voice issues that maybe speak directly into the the thing there?
Reverb.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
There we go. That's perfect. Yep.
Okay. I have to hold my computer at a certain angle. I wanted I wanted to go back. I I took some time to think about that La Quinta Inn project. And I I really, I think at the time I didn't say anything because it seemed like there was pretty overwhelming support for the project. But I I really wanted to make a point of saying, you know, we've we've approved for the and approved space for businesses that are going to take away from or sort of local charm and and local flair. And we're already experiencing some significant decreases in across our scene.
Valerie, we're again, we're losing, we're losing your
They will have to pay it eventually. Oh, hold on. Is this better?
It seems like your internet connection is fading in and out, actually, is what it seems like more. Yeah.
We shouldn't be done on Prime.
And see if this works. Is this a little bit better?
Yes.
A little bit better.
Okay. Somewhat better? Great. I'm not sure how much of that, but it was it was just to really reconsider, I think, in the future. Any other projects, especially chain projects? No, nothing?
Part of it, just that the last sentence is part of your sentence.
Maybe I will hang on to the next meeting then to make my comment.
So I, so I, so let me at least rephrase it. So I think that what we understand, Valerie, is that your your concern is, is that in the future, we should we should look closely at growth involving national change as opposed to perhaps more local or, you know, orientated business to kind of keep the woodland charm.
Somewhat, and there's more I think in some of what I was feeling. Yes.
Okay, well, we'll we'll we'll, I'll make sure that I make time for you in 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 one of our future meetings. We'll have some better audio capabilities. Okay, so Cindy, let's 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 kick forward with our long-term calendar.
Yes, great. And I apologize for the interference. I just have some glitches when I use the Zoom system occasionally. So yes, um, the long-term calendar, we do have some items on the June seventeenth calendar. The Woodland Research Park and Woodland Research and Tech Park, the Draft EIR, and will be coming forward. And so that's very exciting, a big milestone. The other item, which is a tentative parcel map, we I believe that that one will, in fact, be able to make that agenda. There's been they had to do a biological analysis that was taking some additional time, which was holding that project up from moving forward, but I think it's been resolved. And then I would like to mention that on June second, which is a Wednesday night, we will be holding the community, the Housing Element Community Workshop. So if you don't mind, I'd like to just state a little bit about the Housing Element. You know, it is, it is an element of our general plan and it is an element that it's the one element, though, that has timeframes associated with how often it has to be updated. And in fact, we're on an eight-year cycle and every city and county in the state is in the same boat. We're all updating our housing elements at this point in time. So the Housing Element covers the period from October of twenty twenty-one through through May, I believe it is, of twenty twenty-nine. That eight-year period. The Housing Element is supposed to review the current and future housing needs, resources that are available for future housing, as well as any constraints, you know, analyze constraints associated to housing production in the community, and then come up with strategies on how to address those constraints. One of the other big issues associated with housing is also the state requires that the city that cities and counties provide adequate sites in order to to meet our housing need. So the state comes up with a, what they've determined to be a housing need number over the eight-year period. What they do then is they divvy it up and they 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 give each of the regional council of governments a certain amount of housing that they have to then divvy up among their member entities. We, the City of Woodland, happens to be part of the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, otherwise known as SACOG. And so SACOG went through a process in twenty twenty, working with all the different member agencies to come up with a formula to divvy up the regional housing needs allocation for each community. So our regional housing allocation in total is three thousand and eighty-seven new housing units, of which I think it's about a little over a thousand units of those have to be supposed or or sites available have to be for lower-income housing households. Now, the city is not responsible. The the Housing Element and state does not require the city to produce those units. But we do have to show that we have adequate adequately zoned and at sites of of adequate size to meet that housing need. And the state has a series of criteria that are looked at to evaluate those housing sites. So the Housing Element, you know, the consultant team and staff have have been looking at sites for some time to identify the appropriate sites in the city to meet our housing need. And that is actually contained within the Housing Element. It's in Appendix C to the Housing Element. There's a list of each of the sites and then there's some maps associated. So what we'll be doing is holding a community workshop, presenting this information. We have a sixty-day review period, so we'll be taking comments on the Housing Element through July twelfth, actually. And then we'll need to move the Housing Element forward. We'll probably have a public meeting with the Planning Commission in August. And then a meeting with the city council in September.
Great. Cindy, thank you so much. Do we have any additional staff comments other than that?
I do not.
Okay, so at this point, I'd like to ask, do we have a, Chris, do you have a question?
Yeah, yes, sir, if I may, just on the long-range calendar items. Cindy, I guess, part of my question, it's kind of a two-parter and I totally get it. If you don't have an answer readily available, I'm more than willing to get it at the next meeting. Is, have we been working with any of our community partners? You know, the way that our Housing Element is lining up is very interesting with with the way that the state budget is lining up at this point. Are we working with any of our partners to try and go after or corner some of that twelve billion dollars that our governor has put forward for housing, housing the homeless to put into some of our very low income and low income sites? Are we working with maybe Yolo County Housing or anybody like that to try and really, I I'm sure every county is doing it, but trying to get out there and get our piece of that of that very large pot?
You know, Commissioner Holt, I I can't answer you in a specific, other than to say that, yes, the city does make every effort to go after grants that are available, you know, associated with various housing-related activities. I cannot speak specifically to the 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 funds that you were mentioning. I can certainly look into that. And that actually, thank you for asking that, because that'll probably be a question that may come up during the community workshop. So, yeah.
Yeah, they just announced it May eleventh.
Okay.
So it's it's so new. Yeah, but but it would be great if we could find a way, you know, similar to what we did with Mercy Housing, you know, out there in Spring Lake and even over at the end of Beamer. I thought, you know, those were really good efforts.
Yeah.
Good question. Chris, do you have a second one? Because you said there's two-part question?
I think I think that was both parts. Yeah, that was both parts. Thank you.
Okay, well, good. So with that now, I'll ask, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion that we adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion from Vice Chair Liz Raga.
I actually have a couple of questions for Cindy.
Okay, go ahead.
Before we do that?
Okay, go ahead, Fred.
Cindy, who do we currently have in our staff that is the person that is looking at what you discussed about, you know, our, like, lot division, lot subdivide, dividing lots and stuff like that? Who who is our person in the city that is is the lead person on that?
Well, I'm not sure that there's a lead person. I would say that it comes through the planning department. And typically, if if somebody wants to do lot split, lot development, you know, parcel development, they turn an application into the planning department. And then we review, we, with the other departments and and agencies, review the the project.
Do we have a minimal, like, either small home or cottage-sized parcel?
You mean a requirement or a limit?
Find anything.
Um, you know, that's part of why we're working on the code update. So if it depends on where it is, in the interim zoning area, if it's in, if it's, you know, where we, the the development criteria is very flexible. And so I'd be very happy to talk with you further about a site that, if you've got a site in mind, you know, and and talk, talk with you about it.
Okay, thanks, Cindy.
Sure.
Okay, so we have a motion from Vice Chair Liz Raga. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a second from Lopez. And so now just go down again alphabetically. So call for the vote. Commissioner Harris? Got to unmute, brother.
Muteing. Nope, still muted.
Yeah.
Still muted.
There you go.
I don't know what to tell you. I vote yes.
Thank you, Steve. Commissioner Holt?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Hurst?
Aye.
Vice Chair Liz Raga?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Okay, and I vote aye. We unanimously vote to adjourn. Thank you, everybody, for your work tonight, staff, and especially IT staff as well. And Lynn, appreciate great presentation. Thank you all. We'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye, everybody.
You're on. Thank you.